Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular scheduled Beaver Creek City Council meeting. Before we get started this evening, we have a couple special proclamations we'd like to make. So Chief, can you join me up here and invite our special guest to join you? Would you please introduce them?
I will.
Lovely people, Chief.
Mayor, I have with me two of our communications operators, Earl Contradman and Lori McIntosh. They are two of our 11 communications operators who are the first point of contact to the public when they call in, or they walk up to the window. And they're the lifeline for police officers and our firefighters when they're out in the field performing their duties. They're here to accept the proclamation on behalf of all of the communications operators.
Very good. And you know, this is, we take you all for granted, I mean, we just do. And I'm as guilty, yeah, can't even talk, as guilty as anyone. We want somebody, we know somebody's gonna be at the other end of that line when we call, so we want to thank you very much. But today, I would like to read the proclamation, I want to read the whole thing here today. And so whereas communication operators are not as visible as the men and women who arrive at the scene of emergencies, who provide a vital link to public safety services as part of the first responder team, and whereas, often called the unsung heroes of public safety, or the first first responders, since they are usually the first to receive requests for emergency services from the public and play an important role in the successful delivery of public safety services to those in need, and are the single vital link to our police and firefighters, by monitoring their activities by radio and providing them information and ensuring their safety. And whereas, the communication operators of the Beaver Creek Police Department have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients, and whereas each communication operator has exhibited compassion, understanding, professionalism during the performance of their jobs. Now therefore, I, Bob Stone, Mayor of the city of Beaver Creek, along with the entire city council, and I believe the entire community, do hereby proclaim April 14th through April 20th, 2019, as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week in the city of Beaver Creek, and we urge all citizens to honor the Beaver Creek Police Department communication operators and recognize them for their diligence and professionalism in helping to keep our community, its citizens, employees, and visitors safe. So I want to thank you and ask you to accept this on behalf of all of the dispatchers. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Would you like to make any comments?
We appreciate it. Thanks for recognizing this week and thanks for thinking as soon as possible.
Well, thank you very much. Next, I would like to invite Ms. Forsythe and Ms. Brandt to join me, please.
I'm gonna stay back here and speak.
Oh, come on. Well, come on over here, let's don't be shy, how about that? I have a proclamation that I'd like to read today, which is Autism Awareness Month. And so I, and I'm gonna read this, and then I would like for you to make a few comments to the public, if you would. Whereas autism spectrum disorder, ASD, is a reality that affects millions of families every day, and while our nation has made progress in supporting those with ASD, we are only beginning to understand the factors behind the challenges they face. And whereas symptoms of autism may present themselves in a variety of combinations and can result in significant lifetime, lifelong impairment of individuals' ability to learn, develop and develop healthy interactive behavior, and understanding verbal and nonverbal communications. And whereas Courtney Brandt, founder of the Executive Director of Positive Solutions Behavior Group, now that's a mouthful, has made it her mission to spread awareness of ASD, and is currently developing community relations with local organizations to assist with enhancing the lives of those individuals and families affected with ASD. And whereas each person should have the opportunity to live full, independent lives and follow their talents wherever they lead. And whereas, we encourage the development of resources in our community for children with autism and their families, we must also remember that these children become adults with ASD who also deserve our support and opportunity to thrive in Beaver Creek. Now therefore, I, Bob Stone, along with the entire city council, do hereby proclaim April 19th as Autism Awareness Month in the city of Beaver Creek, and encourage everyone to learn more about autism and what can be done to support these individuals. So I'd like to present this proclamation to you, please, and please tell us a little more about your organization.
Yeah, so we provide therapy at home, and in our clinical, our clinic in Beaver Creek, there are a few drives, a river drive, I guess I should say. We're really excited about our outreach right now, our new, we include everyone initiative, which is where we will train, provide a two-hour training free to local businesses, and help promote awareness and acceptance and just an understanding of autism, because that can be the biggest challenging for some of our kiddos, is getting out in the community and different environments.
Very good. I understand autism not always easy to detect, is that correct?
It's true, it depends, there's such a broad range, but yes, it could be difficult to detect, so that's where having the right physician and diagnosis is important. But I would like to accept this on behalf of my Beaver Creek team, my clinical director, Jackie Deaton, and the rest of the team, they're what makes this possible here.
All right. Well, thank you very much for all you do.
Appreciate it.
All right. All right. If I can call to order the regular portion of the meeting, may we have a roll call?
Councilmember Curran. Councilmember Little.
Here.
Councilmember Rushing.
Here.
Councilmember Upton.
Here.
Councilmember Van.
Here.
Vice Mayor Garcia.
Here.
Mayor Stone.
Here.
Let's make a motion to excuse Councilmember Curran.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to excuse Councilmember Curran. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. I'd like to turn the meeting over for a minute to Vice Mayor Garcia.
Thank you. If you could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And if you could all please remain standing for the prayer. Lord, we pray that you guide us in our deliberations during this meeting, so that we may conduct ourselves and perform our duties in direct accordance with the principal laws of our city, state, and country. We beseech your blessings, so that we may always work in the best interest of our residents and our city. Amen. Thank you. May we all be seated.
Okay, we have an agenda before us, are there any changes or alterations?
Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda, sir.
I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Next is approval of the minutes, the minutes for the 2015, or March 15th, 2019 work session. Any comments?
Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the minutes for March 15th, 2019 work session as submitted. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, extensions? We're all here. Okay. Next, public hearing, CUD 06-5.
This is an application filed by EDB International Inc., 6375 Sheer Ring Road, Suite F, Dublin, Ohio 43016. The application requests approval for, of a specific site plan for 11.82 acres of land to allow for the construction of Phase 1, which will consist of approximately 50,000 square feet of self-storage warehouses, and Phase 2, which will consist of two office warehouse buildings totaling 24,000 square feet, south of US 35. The property is further described as Book 6, Page 18, Parcel 55, on the Green County Property Tax Atlas.
Thank you. Is the applicant present and would like to make a presentation to council? Please come forward, give us your name and address.
I'm Rob Arnold, 2753 Scarborough Place. I'll leave all the technical stuff to city staff and just kind of go over philosophy. I mean, we, we looked at this piece, you know, it's a little more difficult piece than some of the others, because you've got sewer plant right across the street that, you know, presents some obvious issues, you know, especially during the summer, certain times. So we basically looked at, you know, different kinds of product that would be not as impacted by, you know, the fact that you do have that right there. And we feel like the store-in lock, it's kind of a benign, quiet kind of use, as well as the office warehouse kind of thing is also been pretty popular and pretty quiet use as well. And it's not dissimilar to a lot of the other office warehouse that, you know, you've seen in other areas like this throughout Beaver Creek. So that was the, the end thought of where we wanted to go with the piece, and, you know, we've, this thing got zoned quite some years back, actually, my dad was still alive when he got this zoned. So it was one of the continuation of what he started, and we basically just kind of going through everything that we've got, we finally got to this piece to start on it. So that's why it actually sat for a little while, a little longer than it would have in different circumstances. But in any case, we're here to answer any questions. I know Jeff's gonna make a great presentation, so. You know, you always rely on that as an applicant, you know, they do a nice job, so, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council.
Good evening.
As Mr. Arnold pointed out, tonight, we're here considering a specific site plan request for Beaver Creek Business Campus. It's a property located on Factory Road, across from the Green County Sanitary Water Treatments Plant. That's really on the border of Beaver Creek and Washington Town, the city of Beaver Creek and Beaver Creek Township. You can see everything to the west, excuse me, east of factories in the township and everything. South of this property is Arlington Place, which is a residential development, south, with the water treatment plant to the east. The existing site, you can see highlighted above, is a site that's been really a property we discussed for a long time with the owners of the property, as to what's the best direction and what would be acceptable for this property. And a lot of that came when we were establishing the landings plan for the city, and as we continuously update that, we did talk to Bob and I think Rob about giving some of the concerns with the flooding that happens frequently on Factory Road, shutting down that access to some of the ambient effects that maybe as a result of the, some of the things that come with the water treatment plant, it didn't really make sense to do much with this site, other than look at what would have the least impact in terms of anybody who would occupy the site in the future, and hopefully the residents in that vicinity. So they are looking to approve, get a site plan approved. Again, this was rezoned, started in '06. The specific site plan was approved by council in 2009. It's the exact same application that came forward in 2009. We say if we were gonna go down this road, this would have to be one of the nicer-looking projects in the Dayton region when it comes to these different types of uses. The limitations on 50,000 square feet of store-in lock, self-store-in lock, that'll be located in this vicinity, just to the south of the access drive, which I'll show you. I'll get the overall site plan here, it kind of gets you where we're going. Here we go. So you can see they're proposing constructing access drive through that site that connects Alpha Bellbrook and Factory, 50,000 square feet limitation, store-in lock facilities will be located here, and those are the two 12,000 square foot office warehouse buildings. Now, office warehouse is kind of unique for the city of Beaver Creek. We don't have very many opportunities for people to come in here. We've seen a lot of these uses, I've actually visited a lot of startup businesses, whether it be drones, or, or working on battery technologies, or anything really. We've visited other communities where this seems to be the ideal place for them to have a startup company, and then they're, when I could talk to them, it's usually because they're expansion mode and they finally found their niche in the market. And we don't have that, we get a lot of requests for the overhead doors, which you'll see on the backs of those buildings, that will allow higher ceilings, people to come in and do the work that they need to do, which is something that our inventory doesn't really provide for right now, within the city limits. So I think that will be a very successful venture here as we, as this project moves forward. Again, those are the design of those buildings. As I mentioned before, when we had discussions, it was all about the sensitivity, the proximity to this existing residential, while keeping in mind the future development of the Castro property located to the north. We didn't want to have to do anything that would impact the overall potential of the corner of 35 and Factory. Lot of unknowns back in '06 and '09 with how the road project was gonna work out. Those have become a little bit more solidified as we're moving forward. But we want, really stress the, that the design, the architecture, really has to be a good neighbor for the, for the adjacent residential buildings, and particularly the residential buildings to the south, and then the potential development that would be to the north. So you can see, we've got architectural renderings that are all, these are to be the typical elevations for the self-store-in lock facilities, they're brick, they're residential-type pitched roofs. They've got some dormers located on the top to try to help break up some of the elevations, because they're about 200-foot-long buildings, but it is all four-sided architecture. And then the office warehouse is really not much bigger than a house, about 28 feet tall, our maximum for R1A is 28. But again, it's, it's brick, some split-faced block, and the brown shingles be front of the entries to the office warehouse facilities. And then I did mention the road project, you can kind of see the site layout. I did mention the road project that's coming through. Oh, and another thing I want to mention is the fence. We did want to have something that protected this, obviously, from people just cutting through there, so the fence is going to be, look like brick, as you can see in here, with some kind of decorative aluminum, separate in between the columns, which we think will be an aesthetic appeal to it, as opposed to putting something that looks industrial in nature in somebody's backyard along Arlington Place in the township. We really wanted to get, work with these guys to get the residential feel for what it is that we're looking to do here. So that fence will be around the perimeter of the self-store-in lock facility. You can kind of see that layout here, this is the entrance from Factory, it does align. If I pull up the overall access road. This is off the Alpha Bellbrook, like I said, and this does align to the entrance, one of the entrances of the treatment plant, so it won't be any offset intersections. I know we're trying to fix that right now with the Alpha Bellbrook and Yellow Brick Road offset, and eventually that will be aligned. We didn't want to create any, any other misalignments out there. So it does line up with an access drive across the road in the township. Were a few minor adjustments to the road, the private road that they're constructing through the site, based on some of the designs that came through for our relocation of the road. As you know, North Alpha Bellbrook's gonna run through here, which this was eliminated, which kind of was, created a little bit of design work for them to relocate their road. There was a small portion of the roadway that was right here, you can see that is gonna be, that was the old portion that they were looking to construct when we looked at this initially. This is the old part of North Alpha Bellbrook, so it will straighten out a little bit, which again, caused some adjustments to the overall access plan through the development. This is primarily located within a floodplain, you'll see on the plans that all the elevations are requirements are more stringent than FEMA's. We, a couple years ago, we went to a two-foot above the base flood elevation, and says, as opposed to some communities who look at prohibiting development of floodplain, a lot of our valuable assets in the city are within the floodplain development, that are really the future for potential employment in the city and some world equality type developments. So we, we went a step above what the FEMA minimum requirements were for, and I think that was back in '09 or 2012, when we had said, instead of one foot above the base flood elevation, it had to be two. So they're showing their buildings being three or four feet above the 100-year base flood elevation for this site, which all the buildings require to be at least two. From lighting standpoint, we did require or restrict the lighting on the site to 16 feet on the south side. So around here, there'll only be 16-foot-tall maximum lighting for the store-in lock facility itself, all the lights have to shine in, they have to be full cutoff fixtures, zero-foot candle measurements adjoining property lines. There won't be any sagging lenses, so they'll all be contained within a fixture, so if you're looking down, you should just see the light that reflects down on the pavement, not necessarily the bulb itself. Over here, on this side, it was 25 feet was the maximum height for the signs, for the lights. And the proposed signage, they got the signs proposed on the eastern, some, some of the elevations on the wall signs, and then there's two monument signs. One is located at the northern entry point of Factory Road, and then the other one is proposed to be the entry on Alpha Bellbrook Road. But if there are 34 conditions contained within your motion tonight for your consideration, planning, commission, and staff are recommending approval of this request. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them after the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, this is a public hearing. If there's anyone here tonight that would like to address council on this application, please come forward. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes, but you can have other people's minutes donated, if you like, up to nine. So.
My name is Susan Marticello, and I'm from 270 Rebel Court, and Susan Marticello, M-A-R-T-I-C-E-L-L-O. And I'm representing like 25 families from, I'm on Rebel Court, there's East Tarry Trail, and there's, and there's a street behind our house. I'm a concerned citizen, a property owner, and a Beaver Creek taxpayer. There's neighbors of mine who think this is a done deal, there's no point in talking to you tonight, and I'm hoping that you will listen to what I have to say and take it into consideration. I understand that this is Mr. Arnold's land, and he has a right to develop it, and I would love for it not to get developed, because one of the reasons I loved my neighborhood is it was natural, you know, wooded area that I got to drive by every day and see deer occasionally. But anyway, so I'm not happy about the business park, but I can live with a business park. I'm more concerned, you know, except for the extra traffic, and we're gonna be dealing with construction galore with the road that I'm gonna have to deal with for probably the next two years, but whatever. But I'm opposed to the storage units, because as you can see by the thing I have, within one mile radius of this land, there are already four, and five are within two and a half miles. I've called all of them, none of them are full, there's about 2,000 storage units within a mile of my house. So there's not really a need, need, need for storage units. And so why here? I mean, I don't know, but I'm just saying, there is five within two and a half miles, and there's four within the mile range. And, and my concern is lighting, you know, luckily, this is not back up to my backyard, but I can, I'll be able to see it from distance. I have neighbors who, their kitchen window will look out into the storage units, which is really cool. And, but you need the lighting, because you don't want to have any crying that goes with having storage units. When, we were here in 2006, we were talking about how meth labs will store stuff in storage units, which is not good. So anyway, I, I've talked to a realtor, there's gonna be negative impact to these 25 families who've spent a lot of money to buy houses in Beaver Creek and Beaver Creek Township, and I'm just wanting to represent them and say, I do not believe this is a good thing to do. And, you know, there's talk of a buffer, but if you go drive by Factory Road, he's already started cutting down trees, there's not much of a buffer. So anyway, that's all I have to say, but I'm, please consider the fact that there are five within two and a half miles, so it's not like it's a, we're lacking storage units in this area. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward? Anyone that would like to address council on this application? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing, and we will move on to council input. We would like to start on my right, Councilmember Little.
I don't have it.
All right, Councilmember Rushing.
None was talking.
Councilmember Van.
I want to talk about the 100-year floodplain, and the, why it's important for us to respect the 100-year floodplain, and how, should we even be developing this? I'm serious.
Yeah, no, I mean, obviously.
Because, because the reason the federal government forced us to have floodplain management is so that we could make sure and provide the ecological systems for success of the whole community.
Really?
And so if we build within that, it, it concerns me.
Sure.
Because that's why they did all of the research and the study.
Yeah, and we, we obviously take that into very serious consideration. I mean, the FEMA regulations for floodplain management are something that we have a floodplain administrator and our associate city planner, Sandra. All rules and regulations are followed. Obviously, the federal government has established those minimum criteria for developing the floodplain in order to, to, really, the biggest thing is, we have to administer the floodplain regulations that FEMA establishes, so that we can keep everybody who does have a property in the floodplain eligible for subsidized flood insurance through the, through the federal government. So if you went and got private flood insurance in a community that didn't administer floodplain regulations, you're gonna be paying private market-type prices, which could be anywhere from five to 10 times as much flood insurance, flood insurance payments that you would make if you weren't in a community like ours that does follow all the rules. So that's our first and foremost, we want to make sure we keep our certification as a floodplain community who forces FEMA's rules.
Absolutely, because that's taxpayer money that will be used.
Absolutely.
If there's a disaster. So keep going.
Yeah, so, so everything on this site will be FEMA-certified, requires pre-development surveys of the property, to get the topographies, there's obviously post-development to make sure that it is developed as was proposed on the plans. That's, that's not typically a requirement of ours, to make sure a spot check of a survey and getting elevations for every foundation, it's not something required, other than the fact that you're in the floodplain. There is a federally regulated stream that runs through this property that they won't be able to impact, so that's where the cost comes in on that private road.
Do you have a site plan that shows that stream?
Yeah. I think it should be on the aerial photo if I find it. There it is. Think it runs.
Runs right through the buildings, kind of.
Yep.
So, right, right, right through the buildings?
Uh, not through the buildings, no. They're not allowed to touch that, okay? That's federally preserved waterways.
Okay, so where's, where's the stream?
Right through, where it went across, where it's kind of gray.
Right.
Okay.
So there'd be no thing, nothing, that will not be impacted.
And so the buildings are not on that stream?
No, absolutely not.
Okay, thank you.
Those are, that's a federally regulated waterway that they're not allowed to impact.
Okay.
So they are, the only thing that we'll go over it will be the access drive, but they won't be able to do anything but other than build a concrete conspan across it in accordance with any FEMA regulations, similar to what we have to do when we build bridges across the Miami River, everything, or the Yellow Brick Road, that was required to have some expanse done to it, because it was constructed after the regulations got more stringent.
Right.
So those same regulations will apply to this federally protected waterway as they would for the Miami River, the little Miami, just to the east of this development.
Okay.
So all floodplain regulations established by the government, we, we recognize the sensitivity to that, and that's why we even added some more stringent requirements that the federal government has when you're developing these type of areas.
So, so can you show a site plan with the stream too?
I don't know if Randy put one together that has it superimposed, but you could kind of, there'll be like a bridge here, and here's a conspan there, and then, I don't know. Rob, do you know where we're shopping?
Is there any other, you have any other concerns while you're looking that up?
I'm just, you know, sensitive to the fact that if there's a catastrophe, it's gonna be taxpayer money that's gonna pay for it.
Sure.
And so if federal government discourages development in floodplanes.
I wouldn't go that far.
Well, I mean, but they kind of do. And so I just am glad that you have thought through it thoroughly, and I really do appreciate that it's gonna look good. I appreciate the fence, I appreciate the four-sided architecture, so a lot of things are a good thing, but I just wanted to double-check about the thoroughness of the thought process of evaluating the consequences of the floodplain.
Sure. I mean, yeah, we've got recommended. I mean, yeah, we've got recommendations in the conditions that say all Ohio EPA, any Ohio Natural Resources.
If it's an O-N-R type dam, because there is a dam, it's a terra that kind of creates
this pond, or this waterway. So it is something we pay very particular attention to on this property. So all the stormwater detention goes with that, there are multiple retention ponds on the site too, to collect any of the water and release it. That is pre-development, that is pre-development stage, if not better, when it goes back into the stormwater system.
Okay, I think maybe you found who you're looking for.
Yes. Truck's not here, I'm trying to fill in form.
Just turn your microphone off.
I don't have that one up on.
Here, right there.
Yeah, there you go.
There we go.
Just didn't make it into the presentation, but there, this is that aerial photo, so if you're looking at it, the waterway comes right along the tip, all on this.
Hi, Rob.
You're right. So right here, that wooded area that can't be touched is the actual stream that comes through the property.
Maybe it's going to cut a road, maybe it's going to cut a driveway into the crossing.
So the green, the green spot on the right, what is that?
It's a wet pond.
So it's a wet pond?
Uh-huh.
So is it going to be kind of relocated, or is it going to stay?
Uh, it'll stay, but there'll be additional retention ponds and detention ponds put throughout the site. It's not there to actually collect all the stormwater, they'll have to do some improvements throughout the site to make sure that gets done.
Okay, I'll let Rob talk about it. So landscaping-wise, I know that environmentalists believe that wetlands are very important, and so do I, because they're very good for our water quality and everything else. So as you're landscaping this, are you trying to do natural stuff, or how are you landscaping it?
Well, we will retain a lot of the natural look of what we've got there.
Okay.
When we cross the stream, we have to cross the entire stream and not, you know, pipe it, because we can't, you know-
You can't.
... damage that or change that structure. The one thing I would add is there's floodplain all over Beaver Creek.
Oh, I get it.
We've developed ourselves, Terra West, Hunter's Ridge, we have, I mean, in residential developments, we have tons of it. So if you said you weren't going to develop floodplain at all in Beaver Creek, like he mentioned, it would not, it would eliminate a lot of your properties. And there's a difference between floodplains and wetlands. You said wetlands before, we're talking floodplain. And this whole site is not floodplain. There's a line that delineates through there, there's a portion of it that is. But, you know, floodplain is something that we've dealt with in Beaver Creek for years and years in our developments, and it's nothing new for us to develop floodplain and fill it in. Absolutely not.
I know, but rules have gotten stricter over the years too, because of consequences. But, so where's that floodplain line?
There's a line on one of the drawings.
It's right here? I see it, I see it.
You see it?
Yeah, I see it.
I didn't do it right.
Yeah, I see it.
Yeah. So you can see, it's not all of the site either.
But it's about half the site.
Yeah, it could be.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Upton.
It was mentioned in, I believe, the applicant's presentation that this was rezoned a number of years ago. Do we know offhand what that number, what year it was?
Yeah, Jeff mentioned it.
Was it 2006?
2000. 2006 is when it was initiated and ended up going through the process, I think ultimately getting adopted in May of 2007.
May of 2007.
There are no expirations on PUD rezonings, so that's perpetual.
Have we had any additional interest in this plot of land, or?
Well, the Arnolds have owned it.
Just from, okay.
I mean, so any interest would be their own, unless they were in a business selling it.
Yeah, I didn't know if they had some other-
But we are back again with the same plan, because we did have a five-year expiration date on specific site plans. If you don't break ground and get a project started, five years was the expiration date. Now, we did change that in 2009 to '03. That's in order to ensure that we're protected against any changes that happen in the zoning code that need to be implemented in any new developments. It's allow, we cut that time down so that it could be, the project would have to evolve to meet our current standards, not really be on the books for so long of a time. So it's three years now, instead of five when it was back in '06.
Yeah. I'm encouraged that there's some thought to utilizing this, this area. I mean, it hasn't, I don't want to say it hasn't looked the greatest, because it does have a lot of natural attractiveness to it, a lot of green space around it. But with some of the improvements we're doing around the roadways there, this seems like a natural time to do it all versus, you know, piece it out here and there. So that's really my only comments right now.
The site plan is not significantly different than it was before.
Not at all.
Right. All right. So the reality is that, I mean, other than an expiration, this was approved pretty much the same quite a few years ago. So Vice Mayor Garcia, comments?
Oh, none at this time.
None at this time.
Thank you.
I don't think I have anything to add either. I know it's always a tough one when you're, when you're trying to build between commercial and residential. When you have the sewage treatment plant on one side of the street and this piece on the other, there are very limited uses for that type of land. Certainly residential doesn't want to be right up against the sewage treatment plant, and most, most retail places don't want to be up against the sewage plant. You know, this is going to be above and beyond as far as most store enlacks that you see. Again, you saw the pictures today, it's going to be brick. This is not the typical store enlock that we can drive around and see. As far as I want to add the answer or address the one question about need, and you know, that's, that's one of the things that we don't have a whole lot of control over. That's like mattress stores, or, or that sort of-
Pizza shops.
Pizza shops. I mean, they just seem to crop up, and there's really, we don't have the authority or the knowledge to say, to do the study and say what is needed. We certainly need to address the lighting, as somebody mentioned, and I think staff is doing that well. But, but it's, you know, we're just not expert enough to know what's needed, and even if we were, that's not our job necessarily. So with that-
Can I have one more question?
Please.
In response to the citizen who was worried about it, can you tell me about the setback of the building from, from the residences?
I've got that all set up here. I'll get that back there, Pete. My presentation.
You can just verbally tell.
Well, I've got, I mean, we actually put some illustrations together, it shows exactly each point to the proximity to the-
Thanks.
There we go.
So if you go, the very last slide, I think, click three here. This has almost all the setbacks on it. So if you look, we're looking, as you get moved around the site, you're looking at 210 here, 173, 162, 211. So each arrow is pointing to a property that's adjacent. So obviously, this is phase two, or phase three, and phase four, which is not part of the original zoning. That will have to be something that's addressed, who knows how far down the road. But all the setbacks that are established now along this property are over, over 500 feet and around 200 feet if you go to the south. That's to the closest building.
Tell me ones that'll stay the same, are the ones to the south.
Right. Yeah, these all will stay the same.
Right, right. The ones, the 200 or thereabouts, those will stay the same. Anything else?
No, I just wanted to-
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
All right. Anything else from council?
I just have one question, Mr. Mayor. So, Mr. Arnold, did you happen to get with any of the neighbors, or do you send anything out? I know you've done that in the past at different developments.
We didn't. We really didn't. You know, they get their, their notice, and there were some last meeting, and I would assume that they were satisfied with what they've heard. I mean, because they're not here, but, you know, I can only make that assumption.
Right. Well, I just know that you, in the past, I was at a meeting and you had done that stuff.
You know, the one thing, the one thing to keep in mind, I mean, if this was residential, because the only thing, if, they're, they're higher than this site-
Yes, they are.
-they're going to look down on it. And then the rest of it is, I mean, I've heard them say, well, there's lighting and this and that. Well, there's lighting with residential as well. If I had a bunch of houses or condos there, or whatever, you would still have light coming up, so it's not like that's going to be different. I mean, you can't eliminate light if you're going to have, you know, humans, you know, cohabitating there in some fashion. So, you know, it just seems like, you know, if you really think it through, because if we had houses or condos there, we could probably be, what, 10, 20 feet from the property line instead of 200 feet. So when I said this is, was benign, it really is. It's a lot more benign than even residential, in my opinion, you know, in, because it looks like residential, but it's way further away. We gave a lot of green space around that, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
I appreciate it. Good, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? All right, you do have a motion before you, if anyone would like to make it.
Mr. Mayor, I move for the purpose of taking administrative action, approval of specific site plan for the Beaver Creek Business Campus, on the basis that City Council finds the facts submitted, with the application accompanying materials and modifications, amendments, and supplementary conditions satisfy the standards and criteria for a specific site plan as per Code 158.066 of the zoning code. Supplementary conditions required of this approval shall be as follows, which are 34. I further move that this motion, with all conditions, be fully recorded in the minutes of this council meeting.
I'll second.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve PUD 06-5, specific site plan number three. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries. Thank you. Next, ordinances, resolutions, and PUDs. First is ordinance 19-02.
This is a third reading of an ordinance increasing the annual salary of the members of council to $12,000 effective January 1st, 2020, per Charter Section 4.10 compensation.
Okay. I know that we weren't all present for the last, for the public hearing, so I would suggest that we open it up for questions. Anything you would like to discuss on that, or any of you? Mr. Upton, anything you want to bring up on that?
Yeah, I certainly apologize for missing the past meeting, and appreciate each of you excusing me from it. That's very nice of you all. I was encouraged by some of the dialogue that was had around the numbers. I've heard from a number of folks in the community on the original proposal, or on the proposed amount, as I think we all have. So I appreciate the mayor allowing us to continue that discussion tonight at our third reading, because I'd like to see us continue along with that, with what was talked about previously.
Okay. Anyone else have any input? I know I, I'm prepared to pass the gavel and make a motion if, if anybody has had any input right now.
I still am okay, since we only do this every 10 years, every 20, how many years? 20 years?
Oh, 20.
Every 20 years, because we just don't do it very often. I'm still okay with leaving it where it's at, because in the future, I think we need people to realize that if they serve on City Council, their time and their talent and their, and being engaged, it's not just a board meeting where you show up and vote, you're supposed to be engaged in the community and make things happen. And if you want people to commit that time, I think it's good to make a difference. I'm just, I'm just saying, we want to attract people to realize, recognize the importance of the job. So, and it, and it doesn't come up but once every 20 years, so I'm just-
I would agree. I still feel that 100% increase is a little much. I do believe council should have more compensation. I do agree with Vice Mayor Garcia and Councilmember Van, because I do think that people are busy, and we do want them to be engaged, as she stated, and we really do want people to be involved. And I think that sometimes, you know, there's not maybe enough incentive for them to do that, because council is, you are busy when you're on council. So, and there are a lot of things you're doing, you're going into the community, and a lot of engagements that you have to attend, so on behalf of council. So I do agree with that. I just think 100% increase, and I know it's been 20 years, but at the same time, we have parks loving, and we have roads, and we have lots of other things going on in the community, that I think that we should take a look at all of those pieces at the same time when we do that. And I do appreciate your, your input, Mr. Mayor, on that.
Okay. Well, there's been some discussion also about possibly adding this responsibility to our charter review committees in the future, that maybe they would each, every five years that they meet, they would take a look at salaries as well, even though it's not a charter change, and it's not something that, but they can make a recommendation-
I think that would be good.
-while they're looking at your charter. So that's something we might want to do. Now, we can do this, Councilmember Van, you sponsored this, if you would like to make a motion to approve it as you sponsored it, you're welcome to. If not, I would, I have a motion that I would like to make. But it's up to you.
I would, I would move that we approve the ordinance as written.
All right. We have a motion. Is there a second? All right, so that failed for the lack of a second. I'm going to pass the gavel, and there's, and there has been a lot of discussion, so Madam Vice Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to amend the amount to, from $12,000, which is equal to $1,000 a month, down to $10,800, which is $900 a month. And legal, that is appropriate to do that in that way?
Yes, it is. So $10,800?
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you, Mayor.
So that's my motion.
So we have a motion for $10,800. Do we have a second?
I will second that.
I have a motion and a second for amending it to $10,800. Do we have a roll call vote?
Well, you can if you wish.
You can on the motion.
You don't have to.
Not on the, on the motion, no, I, not required.
This is just an amendment.
This is just the amendment.
Okay. All right. So-
It's just a motion.
All in favor for the amendment?
Aye.
No. All opposed? Okay, motion carries, amendment carries.
So there's five, one.
All right. Now, you have an amended motion, Councilmember Van. Would you like to make a motion to approve your-
I would move to approve the amended motion. $10,800.
You want to approve the-
Motion to approve the amended-
That's what I said.
Ordinance, yes.
Yes, the ordinance 19-2.
Ordinance, okay.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. I've still passed the gavel, I'll second that.
All right, I have a motion and a second for the amended ordinance. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign?
Aye.
Round one, motion carries.
Okay. Thank you very much.
We're doing a roll call here? Don't need to.
Were you doing a roll call? I thought you were going to do-
We, we did the last time, because it was the way the discussion was going, but that was my decision.
Okay.
You want to, if you want a roll call, you can.
No, that's fine, no.
No, we don't need it.
Hey, lawyer doesn't get to call for a roll call.
I know, I know.
I said, you can call for it.
All right. I'm going to grab the gavel back, if you don't mind, Vice Mayor.
Absolutely.
And we will move on to Resolution 19-24.
This is a resolution to authorize the submittal of funding application for community, community development block grant funding through the Green County Department of Development.
Hey.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the City Council.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good.
Good. Staff was recently informed that the Green County Commissioners are accepting applications for the community block grant funding. In reviewing the restrictions on the grant money, we're recommending on one project, one application. As you know, the city has recently acquired the piece of property to the north of Southeast Street, directly across from the senior center. In reviewing the restrictions on the grant money, we're recommending one project, one application. As you know, the city has recently acquired the piece of property to the north of Southeast Street, directly across from the senior center. Our plans are to go ahead and start construction on the, on a parking lot, on that piece of ground, yet this year. What the proposed application would be for is the, the lighting and sidewalk connection in order, we could lower our costs in the building of that parking lot if we're successful with this grant application by phasing in the, the construction a little bit. The proposed improvements we're looking at for the, for the block grant application are forty thousand dollars. Of that, we would be asking for thirty-two thousand with a local match of eight. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, that's, that's just a great use for this, this money resource that we don't get to take advantage of very often. Does the council have any comments?
I, I'd just like to thank them for doing that, and then, was it last year or the year before, we used the, the same funding for the lights at the senior center?
It's been a couple of years ago.
It's been a couple of years, so I just think that's a tremendous opportunity that we are able to do. So, thanks staff again for doing that, and actually, that's through the Commissioner's office, so, it's great that the county's opportu, provides that opportunity to the city.
Anyone else?
Could work.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I would move for approval of Resolution nineteen dash twenty-four.
Second. I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution nineteen dash twenty-four. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries, thanks. Next, Resolution nineteen dash twenty-five.
This is a resolution to authorize the city manager to enter into an agreement with Beaver Creek Township for the city of Beaver Creek to provide additional fire and emergency personnel dispatching services.
Okay, Chief.
Evening, Mayor and Council. This is a, an agreement made between the city of Beaver Creek, Beaver Creek Township, for the city of Beaver Creek Police Department to provide additional dispatching service for the Township Fire Department. Beaver Creek Township entered into an agreement to provide fire and EMS services to Bath Township commencing January one, two thousand and nineteen. For three, three years, requiring the separate agreement for additional dispatching services. The duration of this agreement mirrors Beaver Creek Township agreement with Bath Township. This agreement shall automatically renew for an additional three-year period unless written notice by the party intending to cancel is given to the other party by June thirtieth of the preceding year, and the dollar amount agreed to is seventeen thousand seventy dollars, and should involve less than two hundred and fifty calls to the area that Beaver Creek Township is going to service or is servicing for Bath Township. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Chief. Do we have any questions? The logic, the reasoning is because of the added territory that its fire department has undertaken in Bath Township.
Correct, yeah.
And is it adjustable, or is it fixed for three years?
If the call number goes up and their fee goes up, our fee goes up.
Okay, I appreciate that. All right, any other comments? Is there a motion?
Motion to pass Resolution nineteen dash twenty-five.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve Resolution nineteen dash twenty-five. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same. Motion carries, thank you. Council time. Councilmember Upton, would you like to start?
Spring, I think, is here. Woo-hoo! But with that, I would just ask our folks at home to check out what's going on with our Parks Department. We got lots of activities coming up for the next six, eight weeks. Fishing Derby being one of them, one of my favorites of the year, so hopefully everybody can get out to that and enjoy it, but yeah, just check out what we got going on, a lot of good stuff here in the city. That's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Van?
I just wanted to shout out that Public Health is celebrating one hundred years.
The Public Health Department's celebrating one hundred years, and I think it's terrific that we're able to delegate our responsibility as a city to the Green County Health Department, and appreciate what they do for us, and I just wanted to shout out, Green County has pretty good statistic for being a healthy, healthy county in the state of Ohio, and that's a good thing. We need to keep working on that with bikeways and other things, but I just wanted to shout out and congratulate them on their century of, of work. I went to the meeting with the Township and the county to talk about Ohio University and the business park that they're putting in at the Rust property. I was extremely excited about what they're doing. It is important to me that we make decisions that continue to make that an attractive place to get to. The road that is gonna connect to Alpha, Bell Brook Road, is in Beaver Creek. We just need to think forward and be smart about how we plan. They've done terrific planning. They, Ohio University is going to offer certificates and innovative business opportunities on their sixty acres, and they're our neighbor, and so it's gonna be a real asset to us, so I'm very excited about it. The other thing that I wanted to bring up, the third thing, is, is something for us to think about, the entrance signs into Beaver Creek. We still have the celebration that Beaver Creek was one of the top one hundred communities, and that was over a decade ago. I'm thinking that we should win another prize and put up a different sign, and I think it's great that we shout out and talk about athletics in this, in the signs, but I wanted the council to think about if we worked with the, with the school board and the schools, because there's other terrific things, like the, the robots and other things that, there are other significant accomplishments of the schools, so I was thinking maybe every two years or every three years, we could work with the school board and promote the recent five best things, and maybe it's sports, but maybe it's some other intellectual things, too. And I like advertising them on the entrance ways to the city, because I think it, it just talks about the quality of our city, but I just thought there might be a few other things that we might rotate in, so I just wanted to put that out there for us to, to ponder and, and I'd love to get that, a new award, so we could be, you know, when Beaver Creek was the, when we celebrated our twenty-fifth anniversary, and, and I, and I got, and I was in charge of that, and I, and I read the article in, in.
Money Magazine.
Money Magazine. It came to my house, and so I, we can do all these things. So, I responded to the ten points, and I said, these are the ten points that Beaver Creek is just great, you should look at us, and it worked. I mean, I, they didn't give me credit, but they came and looked. They wouldn't have come and looked if I hadn't said, come and look at us. So, some, we need to think about what the next prize we want to get and say, come and look at us, we are a great city, we do a lot for our community, so.
I think it's good thought, and it's something, only have our joint man with the school board. Put it on the agenda to sit down and talk about.
Yep, thanks.
Councilmember Rush.
Report.
Nothing tonight, huh? Councilmember Littler?
Yes, sir, I just want to remind everyone, which I'm sure I will see you all, at the Taste of Green County. It's a big chamber event, but it's this Sunday, and it's not at the Nutter Center this year, it's at El, the old Elder Merman area at the mall, so, that's a big change, so I'm glad I was looking at the ticket, or else I might have been at the Nutter Center. But that's a great event, and then on the twenty-seventh, we also have the Beaver Creek Women's League, is having their Women's League function, which is a scholarship for people in the community. We have high school students, and also adults that are maybe re-entering the workforce, and I just, I think that you're on that Women's League as well, and I think it does a tremendous, just, it's just a tremendous community outreach, and I love that, and I love the opportunity it has to bring so many people together for such a great cause. And then, I want to agree with Councilmember Upton about the fishing derby, and hopefully, it's not gonna rain this year, but that is a great event to bring your kids out to, and it is one of the best events, so please come out, and, and the parks, again, annual report, check it out, we have, and shoot, the other day, it was so crowded, you couldn't really get through over there by Meadow Bridge, so that was a great, that's just a great opportunity to be out, and it's great weather.
All right, hold up just a second. Vice Mayor, Vice Mayor, you got, you got some comments?
Just very quickly, I had the pleasure to attend McAllister's new ribbon cutting the past week. Great, McAllister's been here for a while, they're under new management now with their franchise, and it's just great to see that the two younger owners who came in are both from the Ohio area originally, one moved out to California for a while, one moved out to Texas for a while, and I asked what brought them back, and he just said, family, you know, we want to move our family back to Ohio, and they're not, neither of them are originally from Beaver Creek. So, it was really nice to see that these two individuals, after having traveled parts of the country, decided to come back to Beaver, come to Beaver Creek to establish this franchise and work on it, so we're very happy to have McAllister's here, they already have some new menu items, I know I go there a lot, so I was excited to see new menu items. So, everyone, I encourage you to check it out, and again, just support the people who are coming here to put businesses in Beaver Creek.
All right, and Councilmember Van, you said you had something you'd like to add?
I just, she brought up Beaver Creek Women's League twice in the last month, we've talked about the Green County Career Center. We are so lucky to have that facility, and I am so proud of them for being able to build a new facility that's going to increase training for workforce opportunities for our youth. I am just so excited, and so when she brought that up, I just thought we should shout out and, and congratulate our voters for supporting that, and be, be proud of our, our county, and our Beaver Creek kids are getting a lot from that. They, they send teachers to the high school to help our kids get certifications and things as well, so it's terrific, it's terrific, yay!
Okay, well, let's see, long-awaited Flying Aces is open. Their ribbon cutting is the eleventh, and I wishes to attend that, but they wanted to be open sooner, but we're very happy that they are now. You were talking about anniversaries, Afton out at Wright Pat. It had its one-hundredth year celebration just a few weeks back, and it warranted the Chief of the Air Force, a four-star, to come down and do the commencement speech for the graduating class. The eighty-eighth Air Base Wing is now on its seventy-fifth anniversary is this week, and so, everybody's starting to be here a long time. Pete and I were at DDC, I don't know if Pete's gonna get into that any, but I'm not gonna get into it a lot, because I'm gonna process it a little bit, and there'll be a different report maybe next time, but it was very interesting, it was my first trip, but we will get into detail at another meeting. We did have one glitch, and that was about a six-hour wait at the airport, and just kept one hour at a time, they kept delaying the flight because of this reason or that reason.
That sounds similar to last year's trip, only you didn't take off, did you? This time?
No.
No, we didn't take down and come back.
We got on the shuttle bus and then had to get back off.
And we going, the other interesting point is going, we thought, man, going's great, we didn't have seat assignments until we got there, and just by the luck of the draw, the only seats left were in business class slash first class.
Oh, cool.
So, needless to say, as Fairborn got on the plane and walked by, and you know, there were, there were some comments back and forth.
Oh, yeah, we got harassed.
But we told them Beaver Creek deserved it, that's because of them. But anyway, it was a lot, it was interesting, and we'll get into that a little bit more. I wanted to ask you also, the robotics, I don't know how many, a bunch of us, several of us went to the last robotics, where they have the large robots, they would like to come here on the twenty-second and do a display, is that it may take a good part of the pre-meeting, they don't just do this in five minutes. Is council good, and I mean, it could be fifteen, twenty?
So, four, six, eleven?
No, it's gonna be, they want, we want it televised, so we want to start it at six.
Six, twenty or something?
Yeah, it's six to six-twenty, are we fine with doing that?
They did it last year.
Well, that was a different, those were the little ones, they just set up a table. This, this group needs, they want to pick up stuff, they want, you know, they want to launch things, so to speak, so it.
Just fair, if you can do that, I think that would be tremendous.
They are tentatively on the schedule for the twenty-second, and we will confirm, and Diane, I think I directed them to you to come out and evaluate the space, because they do need it.
Yeah.
We may have to, we have to move, may have to move a few chairs back here. Somebody mentioned the Taste, the Taste of Green County, it has been moved. They're not doing the, the judging this year is not being done by the people as they eat. They've created this twelve-member judge panel.
Totally.
So, if I gained ten pounds that day.
Oh, pretty good.
It's because I just happened to be on that, on that judging task. But I'll enjoy it. I think that's all I have. City Manager, would you like to take over from here?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, we, Mayor and I, we both got home from the DDC, and we'll talk more about later, but it was about two AM, our flight took out off at midnight on Friday or Saturday morning, so it was a very long, like he said, an hour at a time.
Lot of camaraderie during the year in the city.
I walked to the other end of the.
Oh, yeah. Three days with me, he was already trying to get away from me, so.
Too long.
Yeah, well. I did display a new talent, as far as the, the sightseeing.
Oh, yes, and that was part of it, I, I had not, although Vice Mayor Garcia and I went last year, we, our flight delay and everything that caused, we didn't get to go anywhere or see anything, and Thursday night, after all the meetings were done, everybody else was kind of going out to eat, and we weren't necessarily in the mood, we had ate Wednesday night so big, so we weren't interested in that.
We didn't eat.
And so, it was about six-thirty or so, he goes, Pete, now, it, it's time to, you know, let's go, I seen you, you know, because I have the Uber app, and we could be down there, and so that's what we did, and I thanked the mayor, because that was the first time, we dropped, we were dropped off by the Uber at Lincoln Memorial, and he, he was the tour guide.
Proceeded to be his tour guide.
Yep, he walked me through Veterans Memorial, Vietnam Memorial, World War Two.
Washington Monument.
Yeah, Washington Monument, and even got, then go down and at least see the White House from a view, so, that was, that was awesome, that was awesome, and that was all.
Cherry blossoms were out, too.
Yes, and that all only took, you know, an hour, you know, of our time.
Two at the most, yeah.
Yeah, and we were back at the hotel by eight, so it wasn't, that wasn't bad, so thank you, Mayor, for the excellent tour guide, I was honored. Thanks for mentioning the fishing derby, that's, that is a very good, it's not one I could fit in, the time constraint, but that is coming up, so please, that, that's, it is at Laffino Park, though, this time, so last year, I think it was at Phillips Park, so just note that change, anybody listening. We are looking for the Fourth of July Grand Marshall nominations to be done, we need it by May first. Eligible nominees include residents, or those who work in the city of Beaver Creek, or Beaver Creek Township, or a person involved in civic organization benefiting Beaver Creek, and this all can be found on our website under Fourth of July, or under the new rec, MyRec website as well, or if any, in doubt, you can't find any of it, please call the Parks Department. But think about the nominations, this is a good honor, we've had some great nominations and some great Grand Marshals, and we, you know, really does show their, our city's gratitude towards their achievements and their volunteerism, and so many good applicants in the past, so hopefully we can continue that tradition. Just as well, he, we mentioned one ribbon cutting, but here's a ribbon cutting Friday, this one's a, a little, not a little late, we had to wait till the warm weather, and then we finished a project between us and the township, is the playground at Rotary Park, that's gonna be Friday, this, next Friday, April nineteenth, from four to four-thirty, it's just gonna be a quick ribbon cutting, like we did at Shout Park that time, hopefully it's better weather, and I think that's why we waited a little bit longer, because Shout Park was raining and cold, but this will be for the playground, that was the new playground, so please come out at April nineteenth at four o'clock, and we'll do her right and get that playground off the, off the ground, literally. Next off, I did want to mention, this is coming up, but mark your calendars, the summer kickoff, this is the, what we consider the official kickoff, but you know, fishing derby does beat, beat it in time, but this is a summer kickoff, so join us at summertime preview of kite flying, food games, inflatables, summer camp, and parks and recreation, more, and more, so the Green Optimists Club will be helping celebrate the National Kite Fly with free kites to fly as well. This is a good time, you mentioned free food, there's free food, they got the grills going, and it's, it's, it's very good, you see nothing but families and kids, so that is Saturday, April twenty-seventh, eleven to two, at Laffino Park, so please come out and join us on that. And I always save this for last, the worst things for last, but it's good stuff, it's, it's the construction season, and this is just more information about North Fairfield, you know, they are going to start doing the curb repair and start doing the catch basin repairs, they've already kind of started doing a few things, but this is gonna be starting to get hot and heavy here soon. The, once the catch basins and the curb repairs are completed, the milling and resurfacing of this portion of North Fairfield will begin, of course, if you remember, that's basically, we'll go, go a little bit beyond Mike's car wash, beyond that, towards the mall area just a hair, because there's some rough spots real close, so we'll go, go ahead and, and grab that, all the way down to the Nazarene Church will be repaved. Now, the good thing is, all the milling and paving work will be planned at nighttime hours to minimize the impacts to traffic, so at least, you know, we'll try to minimize, that's a, that's a, talk about I-75, that's pretty, pretty crowded through there during the day. I want to mention another, it's a very crowded area, it is even in. It is even in, under the best of circumstances, Grange Hall, National Road widening. This is right where Grange Hall and National Road meet, or Colonel Glenn. We are widening that by one lane, so there will be additional lanes at that pivot point, but at, right now, that's going to be, lanes will be closed periodically as they work and shift and do the curb cuts and do what they have to do, so please watch out for that. Some periodic lane closures for northbound Grange Hall Road at Colonel Glenn Highway are anticipated over the next couple of weeks. That is already a backup point to the base, but that's why that intersection is being done, to help the flow through there. So that's all I have tonight.
All right. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is citizen comment. Is there anyone present tonight that would like to address council on any issue at all? Anyone? Seeing none, we will move on. Next item on the agenda is an executive session, and before we get to motion, I'm gonna ask the question, will there be any expected action?
No, not at all.
All right. Mr., Councilmember Upton, please.
Thank you, Mayor Stone. I'd like to move to enter into executive session pursuant to Section 121.22 of the Ohio Revised Code for the purpose of consideration of preparing for conducting or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to enter into executive session. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Littrell?
Yes.
Councilmember Rushing?